...one budget. We asked you to watch over us as we do this due diligence to get to where we need to be for our budget this year. Watch over all of us and watch over our first responders. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance as we provide the United States of America, the republic which sustains by a nation without indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna read.
Commissioner Branson.
Oh, yeah.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Oh, here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Firstner.
Here.
Commissioner Oliver.
Here.
All right. I'm gonna read this. Due to COVID-19, City Hall is closed to the public and is subject to change based on the Governor's executive order. The public may attend through electronic media by watching live on Spectrum Channel 493 with a live stream of www.okeeche.org/197/okeetv. Any interested party is invited to offer comments and/or questions during the hearing by emailing citizens@okeeche.org or calling 407-554-7118, or by registering in advance by emailing citizens@okeeche.org or calling 407-905-3105. And City Hall staff will call you during the live meeting. Information on the city's budget can be found on the city's website at www.okeeche.org under Quick Links. Budget workshops and hearings and/or www.okeeche.org/967-budget workshop hearings. All right. We're gonna go down to public hearings. Mayor is open to announce. Briefing by Director of Finance.
Good evening. I hope, can you hear me on this mic?
No.
No. There. Is it? Now, can you hear me? There we go. Okay, before I start with my briefing, I provided each of you commissioners and the mayor a document that looks like this. It's a list of adjustments which I'm going to discuss in just a moment. You may want to refer to it as I'm going through my briefing. So, subsequent to the first tentative budget hearing that we held two weeks ago, Finance performed a final review and adjusted the budget for those corrections as well as requests from city management. These adjustments did not affect the tentative millage rate, which is still budgeted at 5.15. The mayor and commissioners were provided a schedule of these changes, which I just discussed, and they will be included in the budget book if approved at this meeting. Those adjustments were: $100,000 was added to general fund transfers in for administrative costs as a result of truing up of the funds after final review. General fund beginning cash revenue was reduced by $76,500. $24,000 was added for the November 1920 observance from surplus contingency funds. $2,000 additional funding was added to community grants. $1,500 additional funding was budgeted for the mayor and commissioners for travel and miscellaneous expenses. $20,000 was added to the city manager's training budget for diversity training. $9,000 additional funding was added to the street operations capital budget to fund additional traffic calming projects. $250,000 was added to the utility funds capital budget to fund potential land purchases. $82,000 was added to the utility funds professional services line for an unanticipated service study. A non-monetary adjustment was made to the description of vehicles for the police department to eliminate reference to a specific make of vehicle. The total budget for the city of Ocoee is $85,530,745, up by $355,500 from the tentative budget hearing as a result of the adjustments previously noted. The general fund budget is $52,930,550, an increase of $23,500 over the tentative budget hearing, and is balanced at 5.15 mils as approved by the commission at the tentative budget hearing. The difference between the 5.15 mils and the rollback rate is .1392 mils, $441,631, or 2.78%. Ad valorem taxes are used to finance the city's operations, provide city services, and maintain infrastructure and capital projects, fund salaries for city employees, and provide services. The increase in ad valorem revenues over 2020 will also offset anticipated reductions in other revenue sources resulting from the COVID pandemic. That's all I have for you this evening.
All right. General public comments. You got any emails or call-ins?
I don't have any emails at this moment and no phone calls.
All right. Then we're gonna get to the general comments by commissioners. So, I'm gonna start. First, on this, this does not change the tentative millage.
It does not. The tentative millage is the same.
Well, I wanna make a couple of comments on it before we get going. And looking at the community promotion, what's that?
The community promotion's the $24,000. That's for the November 1920 observance, July, Perry.
Okay. All right. All right. The other is, on the travel for commissioners, $1,500, is that added to what's already in there? Not?
That's an increase.
In addition to. In addition to.
Okay. I just wanna make sure. Awesome, 'cause maybe not even doing the travel in this year, it looks like, so we'll have it carried over. And $20,000 of training, who's that for?
That's for the city manager.
$20,000? Where are you going?
Mayor, you may remember we had, we had the presentation by Mr. Smalley, who came in to do the diversity and harassment, the sexual harassment training.
Right, okay. All right, that's what I'm asking.
And the commission wanted me to talk to him, so we're looking at actually using him citywide, police, fire, and all general employees.
All right. That's what I'm asking. Okay. And now, in utilities, you've got $82,000 of professional services, and we already got professional services adding in the budget. So, where's $82,000 more?
Ms. Krutow, I'm sorry. I was like thinking, what's her last name? I'm sorry. I'm getting older.
Who?
Jamie was evaluating her budget, and I will let her finish explaining what she did to the funding.
Well, I'm asking Finance right now.
Okay, so.
$82,000 besides what's in the budget books.
Correct. So, I could, I am not a utilities director, but Ms. Krutow presented that a study needs to be done to ensure that we have the service levels and the pressure levels that we need to support all of the new properties that we're putting on. And in order to ensure that we do, we need to have a study done, and those costs were not taken into consideration when we initially built the budget. So, that's what this $82,000 is for.
That just come about.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mayor, this is something we've done in the past, like every five years or so, and with the change in management up there, it's something I talked to Jamie about. It's just something that we really need to do in order to be prepared for some of the large projects that we're showing on the books for the next few years. We just need to stay ahead of the curve there.
That'll come to us first, right?
Well, if you, if you put it in the budget for 82, if it's, does it come back?
In order to sign a contract for the professional services, the contract will have to come back to the commission, yes.
I'm saying, when we put in for a contract and pay this money out, we'll see it and vote on it.
Yes, sir. You will see it again.
As long as it's coming here and we vote on it.
Yes, sir.
All right. All right. All right, I'll start with the commissioners. Commissioner Firstner.
No, you asked all the questions that I had. $24,000 for HRDB, that's going to be enough to cover their projected expenses?
I think there was already about $6,500 in there, and their budget was supposedly around $3,000, so that's why we added $24,000.
I'll make a comment on that at the end of the meeting. I have, got something to tell you, so. All right.
Okay, that's all I had.
That's all?
Yeah.
Commissioner Wilson.
Question. Where, okay, the contingency was reduced, correct?
Correct. But there's still $50,000 in your contingency fund.
There still is.
There still is.
Okay. And transfer in from where? Was that last?
The transfer in is from the utility funds. They, each utility fund contributes a percentage for administrative cost to the general fund. And when I went back last week to make sure that the transfers out from those funds to, and transfers into general fund, balanced, we were out of balance. So, that's where the $100,000 came from. It was a balancing between those funds into the general fund.
All right.
Okay. With these added expenses, maybe, am I confused as to why we, where we still have a 5.15? Sorry. With these expenses?
With these expenses, because.
I can answer that, too. And I think, I don't know if we pointed it out in the last meeting, but you see the $39,000 we had in contingency. We actually showed $89,000 in contingency. We knew you were gonna be doing some changes.
Yeah.
And so, with those changes and everything, with taking that money from contingency, and you'll see beginning cash balance up there, too. So, we're reducing the amount we have to take out of our savings account, and we're taking that money away from the contingency line item just to pay for all these things. It was just mentioned, the $100,000 coming from utilities. That's actually an additional $100,000 going into the general fund from the utilities fund also. So, in these final manipulations of dollars one way or the other, we had some amounts in different accounts we knew would change, but we had to wait until the last meeting in order to know what to change those to. So, that's how we're keeping it. And I guess the big adjustment right there is, you see the $76,500. When we did all those changes, we still had an additional $76,500. So, I think the way you've written it there, it's putting that back into the reserves.
Putting it back into our reserves.
I was gonna say, that normally at the end, when you, it goes into the reserves. Normally, whatever is left over after the, all the calculations are done for the year before, that money then reverts to the reserves.
It does revert to reserves. We use reserves, we call it beginning cash balance. We use reserves to balance the budget when necessary, and it helps us to keep the millage rate low. And we're very happy that we have a reserve to rely upon. In this case, we are not gonna need as much because of the miscalculation of the $100,000 from the utility funds.
What is our, what is our reserve sitting at right now? About? 'Cause I'm not gonna.
It's about 18 million in unassigned unrestricted.
What is the total?
So, there's unassigned, and then there's the totals.
The total is in the low twenties, but, but the restrictive portions.
But always give us the total.
Always give, okay. So, it's roughly 23, I think. Might be 24.
But unrestricted is 18.
But there's a certain percentage.
Unrestricted is about 18.
Okay. All right. No, I, I'm, I'm fine. I think, Mayor, you had mentioned something just a minute ago about that it would roll over our travel and miscellaneous. Nothing rolls over, correct?
No. Operating expenditures do not roll over.
No, don't roll over.
They don't roll over.
No, I thought you said that, and I just wanted to clarify that it doesn't roll over.
No, no, no. No, no, no. I said, what was in the budget? This is on top of what was in the budget we've been going through.
Okay. I'm sorry. I misinterpreted. Okay. Thank you.
You three?
I'm finished.
I got one more, Rob. I wanna ask you this, and I know it might, as long as it don't affect the tentative budget. I wanna ask you, and I know Commissioner, I think Commissioner Oliver brought this up last year, maybe, I think somebody did, about putting, I was wanting to ask you if you could put $10,000 in each commissioner's fund, it's for, where we don't have to have the Girl Scouts come up or the, somebody just asking for money in the city, and we could, each commissioner's in charge of that, and you file it out of your thing, and they have to file through the finance department to get it.
If you all want us to do that, we'll do that, so.
As long as it doesn't raise the tentative.
Right. So, what we would take that from, you're seeing the $76,000 going back into the reserves.
Yeah.
If we were doing that, $26,000 would go back into the reserves.
That way, you don't have to come ask for 500 or 1,000.
Well, I thought that's what our 6,000 would go for.
No.
Travel and miscellaneous, which would be, I mean, I've asked for this for years, so I'm just.
I know. This way, if, if the Girl Scout trip comes in, it's, we don't have to.
It's your choice.
Yeah, your choice.
We, again, 'cause we have, sorry.
I don't, I don't know, the commissioners, when you get to it, you can comment on it. I just, that way, each commissioner has a, has a, a lot of cities have it where they have a fund, but you have, it has to be documented to give to somebody, you know? You just can't write it out and give it away. But I, like I said, I seen the, who was it coming here, the cheerleaders from the high school that were going to a national championship, or the band that come here, so we can all pick, well, you know, things like that to do. So, that's just a thought. We can all, I don't know if we can vote on it, consensus. So, we'll get to it, and everybody can discuss it and see what they want. That's up to the commissioners, so. All right. Commissioner Branson.
I think you covered, between the first three speakers, I think you covered everything. I do have a question on traffic calming. I've probably asked that just before. What's the definition of?
Speed humps.
Noting.
Like that word.
Commissioner, traffic calming does not guarantee speed humps. There's, that's what's been traditionally the, in the past, but we have a very liberal traffic calming policy that allows for speed tables, striping, rumble strips, various things like that, depending on the area. What if a location meets the very, and their liberal requirements to meet the warrants for traffic calming? It's been a while since we've had any, any requests meet those conditions at this point.
Thank you. Snuck up on you. That's all I had.
Okay. Commissioner Oliver.
Just a couple of comments. One, I'm hoping to get some of those speed tables in my district, so.
Well, I was part of the reason, Commissioner, I think we had some other line item that we reduced by 9,000, so I said we might as well take that 9,000 that was in public records and put it in traffic calming, 'cause we think we'll probably use all that and possibly some more.
And there may be other districts that can use them as well, so.
Yeah.
Just hopefully, we can actually look at some neighborhoods throughout the city and say, who could use these speed tables, especially when kids are involved. So, I'm definitely gonna be watching that, that particular line item and see where these will go. Also, on the HRDB budget, for one, I just wanna, is this really gonna be enough to do what they wanna do, and do they really have enough time to do what they wanna do? 'Cause we got like less than, less than 40 days, so I'm hoping that, that they will be able to come back and show us exactly what they're doing and how they're gonna pull this off in, in less than 40 days. So, that's just my comment there. So, if they feel that they, they can pull this off with this amount of money in this period, in this amount of time, then that, that's just fine. As far as the discretionary spending, I'm okay with that. I think it's a great idea to allow us to be the, to help organizations that comes in as opposed to voting on it every time, or making them wait to say, we gotta wait on our next commission meeting to figure out how much we can give, if we're gonna give it all, so. That's my comments.
All right. Let me see where we're at here. Okay, we're at number C, amendments to proposed tentative budget. Any motions on amendments to the adopted tentative budget? None? All right. Excuse me. Public comments on amendments to the adopted tentative budget. We have no amendments, so we don't have to have any comments. Discussion.
Scott, would that, would that?
Do we have an amendment?
Would that amendment be the $10,000 that the mayor talked about?
Yep.
I think, that's probably the only one.
Okay. All right, well, we're gonna have a motion.
Are these also amendments? Would these be classified as an amendment?
Those would be classified as an amendment.
So, why would we not?
Yes, yes.
All right. Let's, let's go to them. Motions on amendments to the adopted tentative budget.
Do we need to add into this one and then just make it one amendment according to this?
You could call that Exhibit 1 and vote on Exhibit 1 if you'd like.
Well, can we add the money to Exhibit 1?
Add the increases and decreases in Exhibit 1.
Well, you take, you take the money out, the 50,000 out of the 765, and add it to the discretionary fund of the commissioners and mayor, right?
$10,000 each.
Yeah, perhaps you might wanna vote on that one first, and then you can change Exhibit 1 to the number that you would like that $76,500 to be.
Scott, can we go ahead now and both make that motion for that, or do we need to?
Yeah, so this is a transfer of, what are the dollar figures?
Do you want me to read them all to you?
Yeah. Not, not the, not the budget items, but where the money, the source of the funds.
The source of the 10,000 each?
Yeah.
The source of, yeah, the, the 76,000 or something?
The 76,000 was going to be, it was beginning cash balance for our reserve fund. It will be returned to the reserve fund. So, if you want to adopt the 10,000 each, it will be taken out of that surplus and.
Leaving 26,000.
Leaving 26,500.
All right.
Is that 10,000 in addition to the 1,500, or is it?
Yeah.
10,000 minus 1,500, so we're only.
The 1,500 is the travel budget. That's not.
That's travel and miscellaneous. This would be considered miscellaneous also.
No.
Correct? 'Cause your miscellaneous could be four.
We would have to come up with a title for that line item, and if there's something you prefer, like.
Kind of special projects.
I'm sorry?
Like special projects, commissioners.
Community projects, community, something like this. We want to probably stay away from community grants. That's kind of what we use our grant program for, but we can come up with something that's distinct from travel and.
Well, that's 2,000.
That is clear that that's what it's for.
I believe that 2,000 is carried over for Sleepy Harbor, correct?
Well, there's also.
I believe that's correct.
That's the Sleepy Harbor one from last year.
But there is money in the budget for the grants that we already, that's a separate. All we're gonna do here is take, we get the motion to do the 10,000 per Commissioner and Mayor, we take it away from the 76,5. We take 76,5 beginning cash down to 26,5. So, all I, I need a motion, right, Scott?
That's right.
I need a motion.
I'll make that motion, knowing that, I'm gonna put a item on there, that anyone that comes before the commission looking for money, that is a commissioner's discretion to.
Right.
Support that, but it is not going to come out of the commission, out of the city's budget.
Separately, yeah.
So, just to clarify, if someone makes that request, do you want them to make that request to you? They don't have to come to a commission meeting. You all can decide that without them, without us directing them to come to the commission meeting.
Here, here's what I would say to that. I'd say when, we've told them to go through the staff, our secretary or our executive secretary, and then they can lead them to who's the district it is.
Okay.
That we.
I just wanted to clarify, if someone's asking for that, if you require them to come to a commission meeting, or if you just want them to get in touch with Sherri or G, and she can direct them to you, and they can plead their case to you all.
I don't watch the, I said, white people here just ask for money.
Yeah, right.
Take care of yourself. If you feel so strongly about it.
'Cause it puts us in a bind.
And you wanna go to something that we don't have a seat for?
Right.
You know, if you don't, if you wanna go to something that we, the city did not incorporate that, that charge, take it out of these funds.
All right. You made the commission.
I made.
You made the motion.
With the commissioner's permission.
All right. A second. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Branson. Any more comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, so you can, now, now we can make this with the, with the change in this. So, you, you're saying now it's 26,5.
26,5.
So, we're gonna use this now with the 26,5 as Exhibit 1.
Correct.
And we vote on this. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
All right.
But we're adding, we need to still add the 10,000 per commission.
You gotta add the 10,000.
To Exhibit A or what?
Yeah. Yeah, with the 10, yeah. It just moves 50,000 down on the bottom, under the, below.
Adding it to it.
All right. With the 50,000, with the other change of 26,5 on your papers, this is Exhibit 1. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Oliver. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Wilson. No more comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
What, who do we call him? Sir? Do we come up with a line item name?
This, this, the 130,000 will be 26,5.
Right.
And you'll give a new number to the bottom one, right?
Yes.
What?
Could add the 50,000 to.
Add 50,000.
Oh, add the 50,000, 10,000.
District special projects.
Yeah.
That's what, districts special, okay.
All right.
Okay.
All right.
Do those have to be approved by the commission? No.
No.
Thank you.
No.
Okay.
But it will be checked by.
Well, no, we should. I think we should.
Okay. All right. 'Cause I, like I said, there, I'm like you, that gets tired, people coming in and hitting us up, you know? And all right, where are we at here? Discussions, we're past the discussions, Scott, or can we?
Yeah, we need, we didn't have any comments, no public comments.
Your comments have been received by email or phone.
Can I go to announcements with number D by the finance?
You're on E.
Where are we at?
E.
E. All right. Adoption of final millage rate.
Well, I'm sorry, do you?
No, we got D. She was supposed to make some comments.
I have, I have no further amendments. The tentative millage rate remains 5.15.
Okay. All right.
And it's 2.78.
2.78%.
How much?
2.78% over the rollback rate.
Okay. All right. All right. Now, we're at item E, adoption of final millage rate. Public comments on the final millage rate. Does anybody, we gotta give them three minutes, or just Melanie?
I can put the timer for a minute. The attorney does have to read.
All right.
Alright, the name of the, the name of the taxing authority is the City of Akoi. The rollback millage rate is five point zero one zero eight mils. This percentage by which the proposed millage rate exceeds the rollback rate is two point seven eight percent. The millage rate proposed by the ordinance is five point one-five mils. This is an ordinance of the City of Akoi, Florida establishing a final millage rate of five point one-five mils for ad valorem taxes for the City of Akoi for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Providing for millage adjustments, providing for a collection of taxes, providing for two point seven eight percent increase in the millage rate over the rollback rate, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
You got the timer going?
Eight more seconds. And we currently do not have any emails that have come in, and no phone calls as well.
Alright, comments by commissioners.
And close the public.
Close the public here and we'll go back to the dice. Comments by commissioners on final millage rate, any commissioners have any comments?
I don't have a comment on the millage rate, but I do have a, a amendment proposed, proposal that I submitted to a city manager earlier. That's, that's not out here, and so I don't know if it's appropriate time for me to discuss that.
You, you wanna go ahead now?
Okay, yeah. What I did was, I, I took a look at, at various salaries throughout the, throughout the ci, the city, and how we, we get to those salaries, and then I looked at, of course, we've talked about this on numerous occasions, regarding the commissioner's salary, and, and when it was implemented. And so what I, what I suggested and recommended to city staff is that we take a look at whatever that salary is, when it was proposed, or enacted, and we just take three percent a year, every year, up to the current year, and then whatever that figure comes up to be, that will be the proposed new commissioner slash mayor's salary. And then every year, when the city proposes a, a, a salary increase for the city employees, then the commission can consider that as well, or whether we do it or not will be up to us.
Alright, is it, do you, does everybody understand that proposal? So, what, do you understand it?
Um, I, I need some clarification if you don't mind. So, my initial interpretation of your suggestion via your email was that you were looking at going back to when the commissioners or the mayor took their positions or voted into their positions, and taking three percent every year after they took their, their seat. But what I'm hearing now is that you'd like to go back to the point at which the salary, salary was adopted by ordinance and add three percent per year from that time?
Well, no, well, that's a good question. My proposal is, whenever we start, whenever we, whatever starting point we are at, we, we use the, whatever general figure increase, which let's say is three percent. And so whether we go back to when someone was elected, cause right now, if I'm not mistaken, I think the commissioner's salaries are uniform across the board.
Correct.
And the mayor's salary is set, so whatever that is. And so, because it's been such a long period of time since that has been truly addressed in the city, other than the stipend that was enacted a few years ago, my recommendation would be to just use three percent as the baseline for, for salary increase from the time it was enacted, which was nineteen.
Nineteen ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight to current year.
I did not calculate the salary increases back to nineteen ninety-eight.
I did.
You did?
I did not.
Cause I, I thought that's what he might mean. So just to, to throw it out there, the commission salary is four thousand dollars. If we go back to ninety-eight to ninety-nine and figure out three percent per year, the four thousand dollar salary for the commission seat would be six thousand seven hundred and sixty, and the forty-five hundred dollar mayor's salary would be seven thousand six hundred and five dollars for fiscal year twenty-one.
But that's not counting the other.
That has nothing to do with the stipend.
So, okay.
Yeah, now, if I, if I may, cause I didn't put that part in the email. But in, in my mind, I was thinking the stipend would go away, because I think the stipend was set in place to help.
You gonna take a pay cut if you do that?
No, uh, no, I don't think you would.
No, not necessarily, if you start from ninety-eight.
If you do it where you're stopping.
The two together would be more than the new sal, just, just to let you know, this, this number going three percent from ninety-eight to ninety-nine would not equal what the two are now. Another comment on the stipend, that's done by resolution. You all can deal with that whenever you want, at any point. The actual salary is what's in ordinance, and that would take effect after the next election too, if you were to vote on that.
But I'm saying, how much is the stipend for each, each, each?
Three fifty or three seventy?
Three twenty-five?
Three fifty and four hundred, I believe, isn't it?
Three twenty-five, I believe, it's three twenty-five for the commissioners and four hundred for the mayor.
So you're talking about thirty-six hundred dollars a year you're taking off? You only adding.
If you, if you remove the stipend.
You only adding twenty-six, twenty-seven orders.
That's with the removal of the stipend?
Uh-huh. Yeah, if you remove that stipend.
And I think that's something we should, my, 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 I, I guess, my intent is to have some type of mechanism in place to address salary increases for the commission. So how, how do you do that, I'm, you know, and make it fair is the challenge.
Yeah, well, I would, I don't, I'd say I wouldn't do that, but I, I wouldn't have a problem with what you suggest, but I wouldn't take the stipend away. You know, you leave the stipend and then you, you, if you raise that four thousand to sixty-seven sixty, then you're getting thirty, thirty-six hundred more, you're about nine thousand dollars. So that's still not a high salary, but.
No, and, and again, to your point.
You don't have to address it anyway, cause like Rob said, the stipends are separated, it's a separation.
Yeah.
Alright, but moving forward, ten years from now, we need, we don't wanna have, you having the same conversation about.
Well, I could be here.
It sounds like a proposal puts it, puts a, a system in place. It sounds like you put something in place that can be measured annually. So, to me, and make, matter of fact, this is a question. From what I'm understanding is that this can be addressed every year, so you, you don't have to raise it by three percent every year. So if, let's just say we have a bad year. We can actually say, no, we don't, we don't need the three percent. Let's, let's put that, that money back into our general fund and, and keep on moving.
I would think you could put, that it goes with what the employees get. If we get three percent, then you do it. If he gets, I know one year we, years ago, we went with one and a half percent or something like that. One, one year we went one and a half percent.
Right, and, and I think that's fair.
And I think that's what Rob does, right Rob?
We, we put a zero.
Yeah, yeah, so.
So I, I don't know if that, if, if there's a motion, I think.
Ms, Ms. Wilson, I mean Commissioner Wilson.
That's okay.
Sorry.
I have a concern, I am not in favor of increasing our salaries at all, and especially going back to ninety-nine. That's, to me, our citizens should not be paying for something that if you wanted to correct it, commission should have corrected it years ago. If you have, if, the only thing I would agree to possibly is starting currently with whatever the employees get, we get. But not to go back to ninety-nine. That's not acceptable in my opinion, I'll vote against the whole thing. But I would have no problem if the employees are gonna get one percent, we could get one percent, three percent, whatever it is, but not going back to ninety-nine.
Well, if, if, if we did it now, you get three percent of four thousand, you get twelve hundred raised, or, or stepped. Is that what it is?
Three percent, three percent of four thousand dollars is what, a hundred and twenty dollars?
Yeah, that's right, a hundred and twenty dollars. I don't work.
Then, I was gonna say twelve thousand, you're really.
Yeah, I was thinking four hundred.
Okay, a hundred and twenty dollars. I honestly, I'm not in favor of increasing our pay. But I will ag, I would agree to the percentage that the employees are getting, and if it's zero one year, it's zero, but not to go back to ninety-nine.
Alright, okay, Commissioner Brinson.
I agree with the proposal Commissioner Brinson put forward. I think it's only fair. Most of the constituents that I talk to, they, they look at you like you're crazy, you're doing that for nothing. We're not asking for a lot. And even going back to ninety-nine, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, it's still not a lot of money and everything. And this will keep us up with inflation if nothing else, so. And I believe it should be geared to the general employees raises every year, whatever they get. I can see the commission and mayor getting it all.
I'll call in, let me ask you a question first, okay? Is that, if we did what Commissioner Brinson said, is that our tentative millage won't change? Okay, right?
Are you, the twenty-six thousand dollars we're gonna be putting back into the reserves?
Would you have, anywhere you can find that at, Rob?
It would be for half a year though, basically, cause you, after the next election in April.
Well, that's, that's over, that's monthly anyway.
Right, so, total cost would be ten to fifteen thousand dollars, but half of that, because that's for the whole year, it wouldn't happen until after the next election, so easily funded from what we have left to, we're putting back into reserves.
Alright, so, we've, alright, I'm sorry, Commissioner Oliver, your comments.
For me, whether it goes up or down is not important. It's not the important thing for me. The important thing for me is that we are, we seem to be progressing as our city grows, and we have a mechanism in place as to how we pay our commissioners and mayor. That, that mechanism that we're, that we're putting in place tonight, if we vote on that and it, and it passes, is, to me, the, 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 the point that we say that now we're, we're moving forward as a city, as our city grows. I would hate to see our city grow to eighty thousand, and we're still having this conversation about how we pay our commissioners. So, and, and we're growing every single day. So, again, in my district alone, thousand homes, another three hundred homes in a few, few years, so yeah, I, I would agree with the fact that we're putting together, we're putting in a mechanism to show how we're paid, and then moving forward, how we're actually compensated as far as any raises that goes on with the city employees.
Yeah, and, and just as a, a point to mention, Commissioner, you could vote on the dollars for that this evening to make sure that's in the budget. We would still have to bring that back as an ordinance for first and second reading.
Right.
Which, like I said, would not go into effect.
No, that's the stipend, right?
Um, no, stipend's a resolution.
Yeah, right, stipend's a resolution, yeah, okay.
So this would have to come back during a regular commission meeting for a first and second reading as an ordinance.
Yeah, okay, alright.
And you, that's not something you do tonight.
I, I think that's, I, I didn't really wanna do something like that, but I think it's a better way to do it and spreads it out like Commissioner Brinson said, to make it a, you know. And like I said, if we, if, if, I mean, our employees don't get it, we don't get it.
That's fair.
You know?
It's fair.
Okay, alright, do we, we gotta make a motion for that?
Yeah, we need to make a motion to add that amendment.
Uh, uh, I don't like when I have to say. You might need to clarify with, can, can you, we need to make that motion, Rob, you got? Let's get it clarified how you wanna say it. Alright, I'm on, I tell you what we're gonna, can we take a two-minute break?
Yep.
Let's take a two-minute break and let Commissioner Brinson and Scott get together for how we're gonna say this. Or, finance lady, Rebecca.
Finance lady.
Two minutes, three minutes. Do I turn it over to Commissioner Brinson?
Yes.
Alright, Commissioner Brinson.
Alright, in regards to our last conversation in regards to city staff, I would make a propose, a recommendation.
Motion.
A mo, I'm sorry, I make a motion that seven thousand six hundred thirty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents be removed from the beginning cash, and the balance of that returned to reserve, and, and that will be for city commission salaries increases. And by ordinance, after twenty twenty-one election, city commission will determine percentage and allocation per year after that.
Alright, we need to clarify again, we'll say it, but do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Oliver. Alright, any comments, any more comments?
I think I've already stated my comments.
Yes ma'am.
I will be voting against it.
Huh?
And I will be voting against it.
Okay, alright, all in favor?
We, we got, we got a public, we got a public hearing.
I thought I did open, I'm open to the public hearing, anybody in the public got any comments? Oh, uh.
Currently there are no emails and no phone calls.
Alright, close that down, public hearing, come back. We've got the motion made by Commissioner Brinson, now we need a second, seconded by Commissioner Oliver. Any more comments, if not, all in, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Nay.
Four, four ayes, one nay. Okay, alright, now, that takes effect in.
Now's the time.
March.
March, for a debate, March really is.
Okay, alright, now we're down to.
Wait, this is my, I, excuse me, mayor, I think this is where I say something? I have a question?
Yep.
Okay, on the exhibit A, if we have just added ten thousand dollars for miscellaneous to the commission, why are we adding another fifteen hundred to our travel and miscellaneous? That seems duplicating. I would think that we should go back to the original budget of fifty-five, forty-five, and then add, you're doing the ten, ten thousand on top of that.
This is the mi, what, it's not supposed to be in the miscellaneous, it was another thing you were gonna call it.
Well, it's travel and miscellaneous.
Well, I know, it's travel, that other is travel, not miscellaneous.
It's travel and miscellaneous according to this.
Alright, we need to scratch the miscellaneous and just put travel.
Well, then we need to, then we should not be increasing the fifteen hundred to that column. We should go ahead, we're increasing the ten thousand to the miscellaneous, or add, see, this says travel and miscellaneous, adding fifteen hundred.
If, if I may, the travel and miscellaneous, we added miscellaneous, I believe it was last year, to accommodate purchase of uniforms and items for the commission's use.
Shirts.
So that's why the, that, that is now called travel and miscellaneous.
That's the five hundred dollars for miscellaneous for shirts and stuff.
And other, other logoed items.
Logoed stuff, yeah.
Becky, what was, what was the total before? We added the fifteen hundred, and what was the total before, I can't remember, was it forty-five?
Forty-five hundred.
Fifty-five hundred. The mayor gets fifty-five, we get forty-five.
I know there was a difference between the two.
And then you add a fifteen hundred.
And now we're adding fifteen.
It's six thousand to six thousand.
Well, we're spending more than that, but, yeah.
Seven thousand, so.
So the miscellaneous is the five hundred dollars.
Correct.
Right.
Correct, so why are we increasing that if we're going to put ten thousand into our miscellaneous, ten thousand?
The ten thousand, we, I think was mentioned, we'd call that special projects.
Special projects, that's what they said.
Different line item.
Yeah. Yeah, they didn't say miscellaneous, they said special projects, that's what I'm saying.
Well, it.
It just has to be added down at the bottom as special projects. It'll be under commissioners and mayor's special projects, and that's fifty thousand dollars.
That's not money that goes to the commissioners, that's money the commissioners give out to communities.
Give out.
Correct, I understand that, so then I, I guess I'm, my understanding was the travel and miscellaneous was, that was in the budget would be the same way, that's just travel and our clothing?
Travel and your clothing, correct.
That's it.
Correct.
I think that's an exorbitant amount for travel and.
Well, it's been spent more than that if you, if you count up everything, Commissioner Wilson.
Thirty-six, thirty-seven thousand dollars for travel.
How much?
Six, right now would be six twenty-four, wait, six, four times six is twenty-four.
If you don't.
Plus seven is thirty-one thousand dollars for travel.
If you don't spend it, it don't get spent.
Yeah, well.
If you don't go, it's better to have it there, and we've had to come back before and ask for it. So I just think, I, I'm not in favor of shaking that out. I'm in favor of putting the fifteen hundred in the travel, and we're not doing any right now anyway, but if we don't use it then, then next year we can carry it forward, so.
No, you can't carry it forward.
Well, you, you put it back in, you don't carry it forward. You just do the budget again and put it back in, that's what we do every year. So, all we're doing is putting the fifteen hundred on top of that fifth, five or whatever it is, and that's the travel.
Then on top of that, you wanna increase salaries, now it's not great telling our residents that, thank you.
I don't, I don't, well, you know, you voted no on that, so don't worry about it.
I know I did, and I.
You know, you voted no on that.
I did vote no.
Nay, or nay.
We talk about taxpayer, we talk about using taxpayers' money, and then we go ahead and do this, that's, that's a.
Listen, I, I didn't wanna do that, but I did it because I think it's something with the way they laid it out, it's not a, not a bad process. You know?
I do.
I think, you know, I know you're coming up, so, I, I don't think it's a big thing for the citizens or that, that little bout of money's gonna hurt anything, I think we save a lot of money on the other stuff. Alright.
Well, you have fifteen percent unemployment, no, that's not a problem at all, is it?
I don't, I think employment's been doing good. It's hard, who you looking at? Alright. Motion now, alright, we gotta do this again, I guess, I got, at this time I will accept a motion on the final millage rate ordinance.
It doesn't, yeah, it doesn't change the, the title to the, to the ordinance. So now you're, you're down to the motion to adopt the, the ordinance for the final millage rate.
Yep. Alright, I hear a motion.
I'll make a motion.
That'd be a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty dash oh-two-two, setting a final millage rate of five point one-five mils for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Alright, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Brinson, motion made by Commissioner Oliver. Any more comments? Alright, no more comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, a motion has been, alright, a motion has been made and seconded on the adoption of ordinance number two thousand twenty dash oh-two-two. We already did that.
Yeah.
Alright, and we've done the bottom, right?
Yep, we now need to.
Vote on the adoption of the final millage rate ordinance.
No, final budget.
Final budget.
Down to G.
Alright, down to G, who, do I hear a motion?
Let me read the title to that ordinance, this is an ordinance of the City of Akoi, Orange County, Florida, adopting a final budget for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
Alright.
You don't need to do a public, open to the public.
I'm gonna open it to the public.
We currently have no emails and no phone calls.
How much time you wanna wait?
We're good.
Alright, motion closing it to public, bringing it back to the dice. Alright, now I'll close this last public speaking portion of the meeting, and call upon the city commission for any further comments, questions, or discussion with respect to the final budget. Alright, city commissioners, any comments? Now's the time.
Well, again, I, I would like to say something if you don't mind. This, this year's budget, especially with everything's going on this ye, this calendar year, I know it's been really tough, a lot of moving parts, and so I, I really do appreciate all the hard work all the team did in putting this together, obviously especially Director Rebecca and your team. Moving forward, hopefully, we won't, we won't have all the health issues of the, of the nation at a, that we have to deal with. But if we do, I, I am confident that we have a one-plus team available to address all those. So again, I thank you for your professionalism and your due diligence in performing the budgetary workshop this year.
Alright, Commissioner Wilson.
No, I agree with Commissioner Brinson, and thank you to the city staff, you've all done a great job. I know that it's, it's a tough, it was a tough year to do that. I've been watching the newspaper, watching the other cities' millage rate, and I think we are doing very well compared to what the newspapers have reported from the different cities that have been listed, and so, thank you very much, and we look for a wonderful year, thank you.
Commissioner Brinson.
No, I just wanted to thank city manager's office and city staff, finance department for a wonderful job. You made it very easy on us, and the city is healthy and well, and moving in the right direction. That's all I could ask for, and thank you once again, you made it easy.
Alright, Commissioner Oliver.
I'm gonna have to echo everyone else's sentiments toward the staff. You guys have done an awesome job in keeping this millage rate pretty low. I think this is actually the lowest I've ever seen it since I've been here, and considering going through a global pandemic over the past year, or, or almost a year, seems like a year. This is really great to be able to, to save citizens some, some money on our millage rate. And I believe that from passing conversations, that we've actually saved the citizens money over the past fiscal year. So I think that's, that's a great job, good job guys, give yourself a pat on the back.
Now do we go down and do this again?
Yeah, we just need to adopt the final budget.
Before I do that, I'll say the same thing, and I always say it, that I think our staff is one of the best city staffs in the, in the area, in the country, or the state. I think they, they represent our city well, our city manager staff, finance, all our.